All right, roll call please. All right, Wyatt.
Here.
Reister.
Here.
Buns.
Present.
And Stabell and Ingle are absent.
And excused.
Yes.
They are excused.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carried. Consent agenda. Before we, I call for a motion on that, is there anything questions or anything that we want pulled on?
I make a motion, motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Carry. Mayor's comments or recommendations? First of all, I'd like to congratulate our state, our track team for being the Class 1A state runner-up. Our congratulations also goes out to the class of Hudson High School of 2018. And thanks to all who put up the flags at the cemetery. And also the city crew for putting the flags up downtown and then for the ambits for a, once again, an inspirational Memorial Day service. So, we had a nice little crowd out there and there was a nice breeze, so it wasn't too hot. So, it was very much appreciated. All right, moving on to committee reports and recommendations. Mayor's task force, Kate.
Um, hold on a second, let me get back to it. Scan, scan, scan. Okay, we met Tuesday, May 15th. The first thing that we talked about was Attorney Luke Jensen was here, who's here in the audience tonight as well. Regarding the Byron-Sargent Park issue that we've been having. A little bit of background on that, we all kind of know that that park has been a roadside park for many, many, many years. Hudson has never owned it, it is in the name of a family trust. And we have been in and out of contact with certain members of that family trust. So, we were looking at some ideas as far as getting that to be either purchased by or turned over to Hudson to leave as a park as one of their family members is requesting and would like to see it maintained that way. So, that has gone through to our, we're looking at a possible eminent, is that how you say it, eminent? Eminent domain process with that, so that's being referred to our attorney for that. We discussed a couple of new businesses that are looking at purchasing lots up in the Deutsch Edition. And some tax increment financing that they are looking at as well. One of the things we did talk about in this committee is that we need to make sure that this is the best face that this is. We only get one chance to hit that Highway 20 corridor, that last exit that's on Highway 20. And we want to make sure that it actually looks the way we want it to aesthetically. So, we've got some more talking to do about that. Highway 63 underpass project has been pushed back again until September. Chrissy and George are going to check with the DOT and do some checking about what we can do to speed that up. Dr. Powersports poured their concrete for their driveway, which is a good thing. They were expecting to be in, this was two weeks ago, they were expecting to be in in three weeks. So, I have not heard contrary that they are delaying anything, so hopefully we can get them open here pretty soon. Twin Oaks project, pre-construction meeting now between the engineer, the contractors, Mid-America and the staff. They are looking at starting to move dirt in the next, very shortly, if they haven't started yet already.
They have, yeah.
They have 165,000 tons, or 165,000 cubic yards of dirt to move around. So, that'll take a little while, but it'll be good to start seeing some motions going up there. Mid-America Electrical Project, in 2015, there was a $2 million bond taken out. And 300,000 of that was earmarked for three-phase electrical to be installed in the northern tier around the Deutsch Edition to be able to get some additional power to some of those. We have been, or the mayor has been in works with Mid-American and talking about it again. And we got a proposal back for about a third of that, less than a third of that cost, about $96,000. Looking at using some of that with some TIF. We're going to continue to look at options for that, hope we can get something out there. Prairie Ridge Third Edition, gosh, we talked about a lot during this meeting, Prairie Ridge Third Edition was discussed. They're looking for some rebates from the city as well. There's still some, a lot of information that needs to come back with that. So, we are still working on that one and we're going to continue to look at that. Meeting adjourned at 5:53 PM. Questions about that?
Okay, thanks Kate. We'll have the Public Works Committee meeting then, yeah?
Scott, Stabell, chair of that meeting, and he's not here tonight, so I'm going to cover this. There's an issue with residence parking on both sides of the street. And so, we're addressing that with some no parking signs. It's going to require ordinance change, and you can read more about that in a minute. There was a hole in the expanded metal of one of the pieces of park equipment at the park. And so, looking at what the best way to fix that is. And I think we're going to come up with an economical way to make that safe and usable for everybody. The seal coating season is upon us, the summer seal coating season. We've got a couple bids from Prairie Road Builders and Pavement Doctor. Dan's going to be looking at those and talking to the, those companies to make sure those bids are comparable. There's roughly $50,000 that's been budgeted to cover some seal coating needs that we have, which is kind of a thing that we have to deal with annually after the winter season. We're in the process of moving over to handheld meter readers for the R-900 system, which I was in the meeting and I could barely follow it after I heard all the details. But Rick is, we're moving over to a new system that has more capabilities and is less intrusive to the citizens in terms of being able to read meters. And so, they're going to go ahead and pick a couple of those up. And then, there was a discussion about three-phase electric service from Mid-American to the northern tier, which will be a good thing to stabilize and provide power to the area. And there are a couple potential businesses, you know, down the road where we would need to have three-phase. And so, that's going to be a good solution for us. And right now, it looks like we're going to be able to get it for quite a bit cheaper than we thought we would, so. That meeting opened at 7:00 AM and was adjourned at 7:26 on May 16th.
Any questions for Matt?
Please tell me it's not the rocket slide that's falling apart.
It's not the rocket slide.
It's all we're concerned with.
All right, thanks Matt. Last one then is the Personnel, Administration, Finance Committee meeting. And we met on May 24th, I opened the meeting at 4:43. Our first discussion was on Scott Weersman's employment status. Scott was hired last year as a full-time police officer. He needs to be enrolled in the academy within one year of employment, his appointment date. In this case, it's going to be September 5th. He has taken the physical tests, physical agility test twice and has unfortunately failed twice. So, it came to a point where between the chief and the mayor, they were kind of in past, so they brought it to ours, explained everything, the what-ifs and what could happen if this happened, that type of thing. But basically, agreed that whatever the committee decided, if we could go ahead and file for an extension, if we would go ahead and allow that, and the chief said he would go along with whatever recommendation the committee had. So, we finally did go ahead and recommend to continue with the extension process if Officer Weersman was in agreement with that. And so, that's where that subject was left. Mayor Wessel gave his 2018, 2019 salary recommendations. He showed where, that everyone else is, there were a couple of, I mean, not differences, but things that weren't the same. Everybody else is looking at a 3% to 3.5% increase. We had a couple that were just a little bit higher than that. So, the committee voted to go ahead and recommend what the mayor has. And we will put that on next week's agenda so that the mayor is here. So, if there's any questions, I just thought that that would be a much better way to handle that. We worked, we voted to go ahead and update the personnel manual. Chrissy had given us some wordage on that, that regarded how insurance would be handled if you retired or if early retirement in that, but you still had to meet the IFRS rule of 88. But you would be able to, and the employee would have to purchase the insurance at 100% paid. The city would not pay for anything like that. And then, once they also became eligible for Medicare, we would not allow them to continue on. We talked about computer upgrades for the next year. We're finally replacing a couple of the oldest computers that we have now. So, and that's part of the three-year cycle that Chrissy has developed. Then, our contract with ACES came up. It's going to be increasing $36 a month, that's on, is here on the agenda tonight. And so, the committee also recommended that we continue, that we go with the renewal of the contract. Next, we talk about the phone system. That our current system is about 20 years old. And need to see if we want to upgrade to the voice-over IP. We would need to purchase a new switch. But our first concern was our internet right here, right now. So, we tabled the phone system upgrade until we can look to see what we can do to improve our internet here at the city. So, we went ahead and adjourned the meeting at 5:58. Any questions?
Can I quick question, Gail? Was this, is there any, is there information given for Mr. Weersma that there is a historical precedence for extension of that timeframe needed?
There, there was not. The chief did say at one time, his usual pattern is that if you don't qualify, then you're released from your position, that's one of the. But that mainly has affected part-timers. It's been a long, long time that it's affected full-time. And that's kind of where the committee was.
I just wondered if anybody had talked to the state to find out if there actually was an extension option available under the code. And you're, yes, is there?
Yes, yeah, there is.
There's an extension option?
Yeah, George, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's all I needed.
Yep, the only concern is that possibly we might have two officers in the academy at the same time, and so, but.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that there wasn't a statutorily available option for an extension. And it wasn't just that we were just sending the letter, keeping our fingers crossed.
No, no. And they were going to have to work on the wordage between the chief and the application so that the chief is comfortable going forth with this extension request.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I said a question on the computers, of course, so was that put out for bid or was that asked for quotes?
I don't know if we're.
Can it be put out for bid so people can bid on it?
It doesn't need to be.
Doesn't it?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so.
What, can it be put out for bid?
No.
You won't put it out for bid?
No, it hasn't been put out for bid.
But can you put it up for bid?
No, it's on, it's on the agenda for tonight, yeah.
So, it's just not been put out for bid, it's just been automatically renewed?
And we have a lot of contracts like that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is a one-year contract though, right? I think with Black Hawk Ways, how does that work, Kate? They always do it in advance?
There's a three-year.
Yeah, so, but they do it, whatever the end of the term is, there's 60 days before or whatever it is?
Yeah.
I don't know either.
Yeah, she was the one.
All right, so we'll move on to the public hearings. I was going to make a comment about that at this time, when we open the public hearings, that it'll be time then for public comments and questions. Later on, when we open discussion, that's for the council to do that. We may have questions for certain personnel. But at this time, when we get into the discussion and action time, is time just for discussion between us, so. Okay. At this time, we'll move into open the public hearing regarding the amendment of the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. And this was due that we needed to, to the debt service payments and we needed to transfer funds for that, is that correct, Chrissy?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, do we have any written?
No.
Do we have any oral comments?
I just have a question. Could you just decide, describe quickly what the, what the transfers required are? And also, I see there's only, we're two council people short and the mayor's not here tonight. So, the mayor pro-tram, I just don't know if the mayor pro-tram counts as a vote? Does the mayor pro-tram allow to vote or not?
Yes.
Okay, so there's technically a requirement?
There's technically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, do you want to cover the?
As far as the transfers go, we've had an audit and the transfers were not done correctly. So, this allows it to, the money to be there in order so that it is correct.
How much money?
The, well, the budget amendment is $500,000. So, and it's, it's an in and out. It's a transfer in and a transfer out, so there's no, so.
But you're saying $500,000 was not in the right place and it's got to be moved to the right place?
Yes, correct.
Right account number.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then. We'll open the public hearing then to consider and gather public input with regard to requests from William J. and Bonnie S. Clausen for approval of Prairie Ridge Third Edition preliminary plat. And this will probably end up being split into different stages. The first phase of 28 residential lots and the sewer water, no, the stormwater detention area will probably be the items completed in 2018. So, do we have any written comments?
No.
Okay, any oral comments?
I just just ask what the expected impact or cost to the city would be to do this project?
Not at this time, it's just preliminary, so.
It's preliminary, we don't have any numbers.
Figures and format.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Move on then to open the public hearing to approve the request of William J. and Bonnie S. Clausen to rezone approximately 8.52 acres for R1 single-family residential to R2 low-density residential district. And reminder that R2 is duplexes and it's not going to be, it's not going to be the whole area. It's just a certain, certain lots.
That was the question, it's how many of each?
Yeah, sure, okay, was there any written comments?
There's someone with two, isn't there?
Yeah. Okay, and Chrissy will show, it's not.
R2 is Lot 32 through Lot 47, so.
R2 means it can be.
It can be either duplexes.
Duplexes or single-family.
So, each lot could have two residences?
Yes, right, yeah, right.
So, how many is that?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Yeah, so 15.
So, 30, so 30, 30 or 32 condos?
Could be.
Yeah, could be.
Potentially.
Yep. Okay, any other oral comments? Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Public hearing to consider and gather input with regard to amending Chapter 76 of the City of Hudson Code of Ordinances. And I have to admit, uh-huh.
That's the bicycle.
Is that the bicycle? Okay, that's what I was.
It's the bicycle ordinances.
Okay, do we have any written comments?
There were a few emails that have were sent to mayor and I think council, just from area people. Just that it's a, most everyone, it was a, it's a good, a good thing. And it's a good thing to have for the bicyclists and motorists, there wasn't anyone that was against it.
Okay.
Everyone I received was positive.
Yeah.
In favor, yeah.
Any oral comments?
Mark Wyatt, I'm from Iowa City. I'm the executive director for the Iowa Bicycle Coalition. We've been doing an analysis of cities across the state. There's 269 different cities with a variety of ordinances. Hudson's probably neither good nor bad, it's really in the middle. But there was an opportunity to, to replace this ordinance with something that's more updated and really kind of serves your community a little bit better. One of the challenges is it needs to apply to eight-year-olds as well as 80-year-olds. And so, it's a little more interesting than maybe just traffic law that would apply to train drivers. So, there was an opportunity to update some things, to have a better definition of bicycles, which would include e-bikes, to do things like create a fix-it ticket just like you would with a headlamp on an automobile, but for bike lights. So, if somebody's talking about it, they would have the chance to repair or replace. And improve some things like places of riding, so they're on the right-hand side of the road. Automobiles should change lanes to pass, to be able to use your right arm to signal right turns instead of your left arm. It's something that is more applicable, applicable to bicycles. And then, finally, something that reflects opening doors into more variable traffic, which is a pretty dangerous thing for parallel parked cars. Not to mention the bicyclists themselves, but to everybody involved. So, there's just some opportunities to update this. We've been working with a government relations committee that's looking at these, these ordinances across the state. And this is the model that they've put together. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just going to, I don't have.
One of the, I just want to make a comment as well, that our current ordinances were adopted in 1972, is that correct, Chrissy?
Oh, I have no idea.
Was it '72?
There seemed to be something between '68 and '72 where there was a bunch of model ordinances.
Whereas, one of the ordinances states that if you do receive a ticket on your bicycle as of right now, you can choose instead of paying that to have your bicycle impounded by the city hall, which is one of those deals that we don't particularly want to deal with.
Don't want to get into that.
You should go to Iowa Codification. Because they just went through a codification process where the munich code people didn't catch any changes to your bicycle. They didn't even offer any changes. And virtually every city, especially small cities across Iowa, use the Iowa Codification people in order to redo their munich code. So, if you guys can get their ear, then you can have them change as they're doing munich code updates to everybody. And then, you wouldn't have even had to do this because then you'd have the Iowa Codification people pushing out the exact same ordinance to all of the small towns that they use instead of having the piecemeal like you're doing right now.
Yeah, and what they do do too is they do an annual, I think an annual update where anyone that has Iowa Codification will, that's just kind of in their fees. And so, they'll send out, this is what legislative updates are.
And just a thought, I was sitting here, I thought, wait a minute, why didn't we catch this when we just arrived? And that's probably because you guys haven't talked to Iowa Codification.
So, that's, that's a private firm that works and provides you websites and things like that, at Storm Lake?
That was my question, is how does your organization work with other paragovernmental or paralegal organizations within the state? Maybe if there's any coordination, that was the.
Yeah, I mean, we've got members across the state, so the next step is to make sure that we get in front of councils. Because it's still got to get in front of council and those amendments.
You may be able to get a wide swath though, if you can get the Iowa Codification people on board sooner than later.
I got a question.
Yeah.
I asked you this similar question when we were at our public safety meeting, but I want to ask it in front of everyone else. And I've got a more nuanced way of asking, I actually dreamt about this meeting, which is crazy.
That's scary.
I'm getting these emails from people around Black Hawk County going, please vote for this. And I'm going, Jeff Marsh says he's never written a ticket in his life. He doesn't know of one, one citation in Hudson ever, nor, he didn't say this, but I can just maybe speak for him. Nor does he probably see himself writing a ticket in the future for bicycle stuff. It's just not something that's on the front of mind. I'm getting these emails from people and I'm thinking about my life and how much time I have to email councilmen in Hudson. And on one hand, I admire their civic involvement. On the other hand, why, why do people care so, why do you care so much about this? And why do your people care so much about this? And it's almost like I'm getting these emails, am I missing something here? Because this doesn't sound real controversial. But I'm getting emails from people as if they believe I might be swayed the other way. So, what's going on there?
Well, first of all, we have a really active membership of bicyclists. Do like to take advantage. We also have a great communication system, so we were able to warn them that something like this was going on, which is probably why I just suddenly started getting these things. But for me as a bicyclist, there's a host of reasons. And not just that I could or could not get a ticket, but it comes down to how do you teach drivers that? And that's all referred into that local code. If I get in a crash, the insurance companies are going to be looking at the local ordinance to make sure who was following what rules. So, those sorts of things external to the law enforcement of it is all really important. And then, I finally think it sends a theme that your community is open for bicycle business. And it's something that's friendly here.
So, I hear the term bicycle friendly. And I go, what does that mean? I mean, there's pavement, you can ride your bike. What about what exists currently is bicycle unfriendly?
So, one of those things that, bicycle friendly is a term that's thrown around quite a bit. I believe American bicyclists use that as a ranking system. And it's not how much people wave at bicyclists as you go by or how happy they are. But it has a lot to do with the policy and the infrastructure and enforcement priorities of your community to kind of bring that all together and make sure that your community has that kind of superstructure, if you will. That makes it easy and a convenient choice for people to get on a bicycle and go somewhere. And to further, this is another thing that just came to mind. There was just a elementary bike ride that just happened last week where they took the sixth grade class. All the bikes, we provided bikes for that. But at the same time, I was doing a bike rodeo in Independence and the right arm turns signal. Really hard to teach to third graders. Much easier to teach to point the direction that you're going. And so, those sorts of things, what you base your education upon in elementary school, you know, it makes those things just kind of part of that superstructure that makes it bicycle friendly.
Bicycle lanes.
Yeah.
That was an issue that's in this.
You don't have it.
What is, what is that, by passing this, what are we obligating the city to by way of, when we build new streets, you know, spend an X number of million dollars to put a few feet over here?
Yeah, actually, at this point, we didn't look, what you're referring to is commonly known as a complete streets policy. To say that anytime that you build or rebuild a roadway, that you're going to add some sort of safe bicycle accommodation to it. And a lot of times, that generally means just a city street that can be shared by both bicycle and otherwise. But when things get busier, when things get faster, you look at, should we add a trail? Should we add bike lanes? Should we add things like that? And at this point, the policy that's in the, the code that you're looking at only addresses the operations around bicycle lanes. It doesn't obligate you to commit any sort of infrastructure to that in the future. However, if you do, it's that I've seen smaller communities put in bike lanes because they wanted to. Jefferson, Iowa was a great example where they have the great Redco River Valley Trail that runs through the edge of town, but they wanted to get people from the trail to downtown. So, they put in bike lanes on a very non-busy road. It's much more navigation focused to get people to where they wanted to go versus them actually needing that sort of accommodation. So, the policy's there and how to operate around them if you need it.
Cool. But we can just use signage too?
Absolutely.
Like we have currently on our bike trail to our downtown area, which is fantastic.
I'm a fan of bike rides, I mean, but this takes it to a whole level, the degree of interest and activism. I was just, I was intrigued by it, so.
Sure, thank you.
We'll get you signed up on a bike team for that ride.
Probably not, I'm not.
Not that, we're not banning.
Maybe.
All right, any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. All right, we move into general government. The Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings of the ordinances presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. A discussion, action to approve Resolution 2381, a resolution approving amendment of the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second? I'll second that. Okay, any other discussion?
You said when you were describing that something wasn't done correctly. What, can you explain that?
Previously, the transfers were not done correctly.
But previously, when?
Up until like six months ago when the audit started happening. The proper way to do a transfer is to transfer in and transfer out. Why wasn't doing that the correct way? And so, now that it is being done the correct way, then we're out of, we're over budget and on both sides. And so, this is just to maintain history and to bring it more in line.
So, the correct way was transfer in, transfer out, how was it being done?
It would be taken from like one fund and just.
Dumped right into the other fund?
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
Okay.
All right.
All right, any other questions? All right, roll call. Wyatt.
Aye.
Buns.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
All right, passes 3 to 0. The discussion, action to approve Resolution 2382, a resolution approving the preliminary plat for Prairie Ridge Third Edition.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussions? All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call. Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye. Okay. Item C, discussion, action to approve the first reading of ordinance seven ninety-eight and ordinance amending section one-six-six point zero-two of the zoning ordinance of the city of Hudson. Iowa as amended by removing certain real estate from the R1 single-family residential district and including the same in the R2 low-density residential district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
There's only three of us.
I know. We're trying to.
Mixing up a little bit.
All right, any other discussion?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please. Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Passes three, zero. All right, item D, discussion, action to approve the first reading of ordinance seven ninety-nine and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Hudson, chapter seventy-six, bicycle regulations.
Second.
Good move, is any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please. Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Okay, passes three, zero. Item E, discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-eight-three, a resolution to set a public hearing to approve the request of Robert Byer to rezone approximately seven point three-six acres at thirty-nine oh-four South Hudson Road from A1 suburban agricultural district to R6 single-family residential district. Do I have a motion to set the public hearing?
What's the date on the public hearing?
Uh, June eleventh.
You, I would make that motion.
I will go ahead and second that. Roll call, please.
Sorry. Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
All right, item F, discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-eight-four, a resolution to set a public hearing to approve the request of Patricia Gordon, Leanne Cox, and Ronald Henry to rezone approximately one point nine-four acres at forty-thirty-nine Ranchero Road from R5 large, large residential district to R6 single-family residential district and from R5 large lot residential to an A1 suburban agricultural district.
So moved.
Second?
This is the same date?
Yes.
June eleventh, thank you.
Okay.
Second, or did you second?
Does it matter?
Yeah.
All right, roll call, please. Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Okay, item G, discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-eight-five, a resolution for approval on an agreement to install three-phase electricity in the northern tier. And that was already discussed earlier that we're doing it about a third of the cost.
Less than a third of the cost.
That was originally.
And this is with mid-American energy.
Do you have those numbers?
Right.
Ninety-six thousand.
They're in the minutes.
Ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five.
They're in the public works minutes, Jim. You, you want them here? Because it was originally three hundred thousand.
Three hundred dollars, earmark, across the city, ninety-five, eight, twelve, seventy-three.
All right, thanks. Sometimes it's good for people to hear things a cheaper.
Okay, I'll second that.
I've got a question about this before we move on.
Okay.
I, I got an email from somebody suggesting that, that that be put underground, which makes a lot of sense.
It is underground.
It is going to be underground?
Yeah, it will be underground. That was in the original.
The transmission lines will not be, they could be. This is the, the final delivery is underground, but the transmission lines will not be.
All right, go ahead and, we have a motion and second on that, right? So roll call, please. Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Item H, discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-eight-six, a resolution for approval of the Hudson Employees Personnel Policy Manual. And that had to do with the section on insurance about once a person retires, if they want to carry on their health, dental, and vision.
It's basically for early retirement.
It's only, well, it's for retirement too.
Yeah.
Second, I'll second that. All those in favor, or no, roll call, I'm sorry. Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-eight-seven, a resolution to set a date for public hearing to authorize the use and acquisition of property by eminent domain and name and by the authority of the city of Hudson, Iowa. And that would be for the Byron Sargent Park.
I just have a quick question. I, I completely agree that you guys need resolution on this particular park. But are, are we doing the proceedings for the eminent domain? Is that what the task force contemplated?
Yes.
Okay, is that I'm doing the proceedings for the eminent domain?
Correct.
Okay, and those costs are being incurred by the city for those things?
Correct.
That's what I needed clarity on because I, nobody had indicated that.
Yes, that is, yes, that is exactly what we discussed because we talked about that specifically.
Okay.
And this is a public hearing again for June eleventh? So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay. All right, roll call. Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz? All right. Reister?
Aye.
All right, item J, discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-eight-eight, a resolution setting a public hearing to add chapter sixty-nine point one-five to the city of Hudson Code of Ordnances. And this would be setting the public hearing for the no parking on one side.
I'm going to get the same date.
Okay.
But then June eleventh?
June eleventh.
Huh? Are you moving?
He's, he's moving.
Second, all right.
Wow.
Roll call, please. Uh, Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
All right, item K, discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-eight-nine, a resolution for approval of umpire pay for the city of Hudson for the position of baseball softball umpires for summer twenty eighteen. This would be at a rate of fifteen dollars per game and they would be paid at the end of the season. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
This did not change from last year, so.
Roll call. Uh, Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Okay, discussion, action to approve resolution two-three-nine-zero, a resolution for approval of technology support renewal with ACES Iowa for the city of Iowa. And that was at what was reported earlier at the rate of one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars a month.
So moved.
Right? I'll second that. Any other question? Okay.
Thirty-six bucks is just what? Thirty-six extra dollars, why is that?
I think it's just their rate, their rate of expenses. Roll call, please. Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?